Good evening. Today is September 14th. This is a meeting of the Hyde Park Central District School District's Board of Education. At this time, may I have a motion to enter executive session to discuss confidential matters pertaining to negotiations and personnel items, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Pounce, thank you. We're now in executive session. Now, Steve is here. He's in the back. A little further. Okay. At this time, may I have a motion to return to regular session, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor? Pounce, thank you. At this time, we'll have the pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Okay. May I have a motion to adopt the agenda for tonight, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor? Pounce, thank you. Mr. Shaw. And that brings us to pride. Can I do one pride?
Oh, yeah, do as many as you want. Doug, slowly.
It's purely eagle building. I'm missing my 55th college reunion tonight to be here. I just wanted you to know that.
Does that mean you started school when you were six years old?
No.
It means he's hiding the other half of the conversation. It's when he said he didn't really want to be there this time.
Okay. I haven't...
Oh, well, I know I haven't been out on the fields alone. I haven't been checking results too much, but we had our first home football game. I know the results of that, but it was a lovely evening. Let's just put it that way.
It was nice weather.
It was nice weather. But I did go send the golf team off, got to meet all the new players. We have a young golf team, five eighth graders, one seventh grader. So I got out there before their match and before the other team arrived so that they could focus. But it's always nice. They all introduced themselves and shook my hand. And again, a beautiful day for our kids to be out on the field. Dan and I caught a little tennis and a little soccer. So full sports are completely underway.
Volleyball also was active this week. I had to see that game.
Oh, I didn't get to see volleyball.
Right, they won.
I got to see them practice, but...
You want to do opening day and stuff, or is that part of your...
Yeah, that's the next one, but I'll move right into the next one.
Will anybody else have any other pride?
Actually, since you mentioned the golf team, I would comment. I had the pleasure of playing behind the golf team as they were practicing Tuesday afternoon at Dinsmore. And I was impressed. They were, you know, for a young group of guys. I don't think that there were any girls. I didn't see...
Yeah, girls.
Okay. But, you know, they were well behaved and very appropriate, I thought. So I had an opportunity, I think it was the eighth hole, that I had a little conversation with them and...
So golf is part of your work schedule?
Yeah, it was.
Oh, okay.
Well, they're out there late afternoon.
It was late afternoon, yes, it was, yes.
It was a survey on field maintenance.
Oh, okay.
Turf management.
All right. Now, we'll do the superintendent's report.
Yeah, and I think what we'll do is, it's hard to, it's really small, maybe we'll make the things that we've put on there a little bigger. I don't know how it looks online. So there's the opening of school report. So actually, point of pride was opening day. Our first ladies led us, kicked us off with two beautiful songs, The Star Spangled Banner and another song. It was a great way to start the year, to have a student performance. Dan and Doug were there. So the HPTA did a food drive and they also had a hurricane relief drive. So, and as usual, great attendance.
You might mention the 30-year, 20- and 15-year.
Oh, yeah, we've increased things as we move along. Actually, I think we have one sitting in the audience, but we gave out our 25-year pins and our 30-year stars. So it's an opportunity to recognize our employees who have 25 years of service or 30 years of service. And we spent some time recognizing our volunteers who helped this summer with technology. Gave Roger a special shout-out as our number-one volunteer extraordinaire. I understand Mr. Hughes has helped with our technology initiative. As you could imagine, with $2 million worth of smart bond funding, we had an extraordinary amount of equipment coming in. At our last board meeting, we also specifically named a couple of the sports teams that helped Our enrollment numbers are pretty much level this year. Our official date to compare is October, so it's a little too soon to tell. But opening enrollment indicates that our numbers are level. Slight increases in Netherwood at Ralph R. Smith and FDR, slight decreases in Havilland, Violet Avenue, and Ralph R. Smith. I'll take this opportunity to offer some rumor control. We are not closing a building. There are no plans to close a school. I'm going to repeat that. There are no plans to close a school in the Hyde Park Central School District. As per board policy, we give an enrollment update every year. Yes, we continue to see a decline in the number of students, but if you go back and review the PowerPoint that I delivered on July 11th, I indicate that we will conduct a study again in the future. A study, conducting a study is by no means an announcement. It means we're going to look at our numbers. We also said very specifically that as of right now, we could not close a school. So I just want to be really clear because we have the Poughkeepsie Journal calling us, we have people posting things on Facebook that are, that is misleading. So there are no plans to close a school. So our enrollment numbers this year, right now, are level. And I was going to say a few other things about opening school. We had a little hiccup at North Park with our well, opening day for staff. We discovered that the well malfunctioned with our facilities team. They were able to remediate the situation and we were able to open school with fully functioning well and facilities for day one of students. Okay, I don't know if there's anything anybody else wanted to know about opening of schools? We're good? The next one on the agenda is capital project update. The most recent event was the architect came and visited at the high school for half a day and at the middle school for half a day and met with all the science teachers. They had an opportunity to discuss the project, provide a lot of input as to what their thinking is about new science labs, both configuration of the labs, locations in the building. Again, it was, they were input gathering sessions. I visited both sessions. The science teachers are happy that we are talking about new science labs. CS Arch will be here at our next board meeting to give a presentation and an update on where they are in the project. We are hoping that either at that meeting or within a week or so after that, we'll find out whether or not we will be able to go out for a December vote, but that's still to be determined. So they're hard at work, they're still collecting data, they're in the district, they're meeting with staff, and we're excited about the progress and we'll have them on the agenda for September 28th.
Okay. At this time, may I have motion to enter public participation, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor? Pounce? If anybody would like to address the board, please step up to the podium and...
Oh.
Okay, no takers. I have a motion to close public participation, please?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor? Pounce, thank you.
I'm not sure what the Roberts Rules of Order for this was, but I forgot an announcement.
Go for it.
Can I go for it? Okay. On September 27th, at Havilland Middle School, at 7:00 in the evening, we will be showing the documentary Screenagers. This is a documentary about raising teenagers in the digital age and some of the highlights and also some of the things that you may want to know as a parent in working with teens and having them be responsible users and consumers of digital media. While we don't have a, there's no hard, fast rule about what age children should come, it is really not recommended for students below fifth grade. The examples they use are really more for fifth grade and up. And again, you know, that if, it's a judgment call on the parent's part. There is a trailer to see when you sign up for tickets. It is free and we are, it's an online ticket. You click on the link and you can get tickets. It's, the people are signing up, so we're hopeful for a large crowd that evening. There'll be a discussion afterwards and we will also offer to tour the Havilland Middle School Science Labs at the end if anybody wants to stay. And I'm so glad Elna walked in because she reminded me that I forgot to make that announcement about the Screenagers. So Elna will also be sharing in the, has been sharing in the planning as well as in the discussion group afterward, just, you know, kind of being available to have people share their thoughts, so. Sorry, I forgot that.
Forget anything else?
Well, I don't know.
See who walks in the door.
Yes.
All right, that moves us to the unfinished business on the therapy dog. And we have two people here can answer any questions. Are there any, anything that anybody needs to know about this program? We have later on a vote for going forward with this procedure that, in case people don't know, will cost $10,000 and it will take two years before the, everything is actually, we have a dog, the people are trained, and it's in the school. Hopefully, I got that right. Did I get that right? Pretty much.
It could be less than that, but...
It could be less? Okay. Okay. So is there any, any questions? I mean, we had a long discussion on this, but Deanna and Elna did come in case anybody had any further questions.
I like the schedule. I'm in the naps.
Which I am, that's good.
I'm actually proposing to try to put that into my work schedule.
Oh, okay. Okay.
The nap, yeah. Nap until time to go home, 3:35? I might move it up, 2:30.
And they call it a dog's life.
Okay, so we can move on. I think we've all pretty much agreed that we're going to go forward with this project. But just in case, thank you, ladies, for being here. You can stay for the rest of the meeting.
Thank you for your support.
Yeah, all right. That brings us to board subcommittee reports. There was a short meeting, not that long, short for the policy committee, where Jay came up with a spreadsheet of all the policies, all that needed to be done. We are really going to hit the round running, right? And as I said at the meeting, really appreciate what you've done there. It took a lot of work. Any other committee meetings? I know it's early in the season.
The Dutchess County School Board Association had their first meeting Thursday, September 7th. You know, a lot going on. They've got, they're anticipating a busy year. I'm just looking here. There was one of the things that has been created and I, maybe I'll send it to Jay so it could be circulated to all the board members, that they have a schedule of what the program is going to be at each meeting through the year.
Oh, that's good.
So, you know, you can pick and choose if there's one that you'd like to attend or like more information on and a variety of topics.
They are worthwhile.
What's that?
I mean, when I was doing it, I found them extremely informative as to what's being done, what's being done in other districts, a general idea of what other boards are thinking about. It's not, it's a, you know, a good hour or so spent.
Yep. And there's, there's also extra effort going into legislative agendas, looking at, you know, as a group, we're looking at hosting a legislative breakfast or some type of an event where we can get our local lawmakers to come to and express our concerns that we have that are unique perhaps to those of other districts throughout the state.
Okay. Great. Anything else? Nope. That brings us to setting of board goals, which I would like to actually rename to district goals because they're a combination of both or board slash district goal, something like that. As you may know, we had a retreat on board goals and the way we do it is slightly different than what is done other places and what is recommended by NISBA. I think we have a good system that seems to have been working for us and I like to just keep, keep the same format if we can bring the goals up. What I'd like to do tonight is go through the existing ones. There are certain ones that I think maybe worded slightly differently should stay there and then at the next meeting, any updates that we might have. I don't want this to be an hour discussion, but, oh, if we could go through, well, let's do it this way. If we could go through academics, board administration, and budget at this meeting and the rest at the next meeting, that sound okay to everybody else? All right. So in academics, the first one, receiving semi-annual updates regarding Common Core outcomes, seems like a no-brainer. We, they've changed in the last year? We ought to just...
You just might want to change the language to New York State learning standards because they're not using Common Core anymore.
All right.
Yes.
Okay. You're going to help us with making the changes?
Next-generation standards for the science, yeah.
Okay.
The second one was receiving updates on coherency planning. And I think last year was in a more...
Developmental.
Stuff we're starting and getting more into it and that six, you know, reports was appropriate. I don't think that is anymore, in my opinion. Anybody else have any other opinion? I would like to hear how the, as everybody else knows at the DLT, what's going on in it, but I'm not sure we need six. Any other thoughts?
I agree. I mean, it's, it's supposed to be strategic planning, at least in part, which kind of implies that things aren't going to move that fast or change that quickly. So I think if we're going to receive updates, two at most would be adequate.
Okay.
Yeah.
You think that's good?
Yep.
All right. Number three, we did, I hope that's being implemented this year, the financial literacy, so we can take that out.
So about that, I know that we received a report on the plan. Is it fully implemented or what's the implementation plan?
I think the only piece that's not necessarily is that the Mad City money, while the teachers were out, hasn't been planned for a specific day or, you know, there's interest, but that was the one activity that isn't set yet. But all the other curriculum is done and in place.
It's more than a day, right? It is?
Well, it's, it can run through so that everyone has a chance to go.
Okay.
So maybe a few days, but it's within, it's part, it should be or can be part of the curriculum and a really enriching experience and that's not set yet.
Is that going to run through both semesters or...
I think the idea was to run it twice so that every senior has that opportunity, whether they take it in the fall or the spring, the course.
Okay, I'm not sure if we need a report, but I certainly would want to know the details. I think that's where Steve is going, about what is going to be in that curriculum, if we want to call it a curriculum.
So you're not talking about just the Mad City money experience, but the whole unit that the teachers developed?
Yeah, I thought we received a report on the plan at the end of last year, right?
Yeah, we did.
I can't remember what it was, but we received that.
That's why, it's creeping me, so.
So would it be adequate?
We have it, all right.
Could I request that you resend us that presentation?
Sure.
Just to help refresh my memory.
Now, is there an outline the kids get at the start of the program?
It's embedded into a mandatory course. So it's a two-week unit that the teachers wrote. So it's part of the overall syllabus.
The fourth one was about graduation rates. We obviously were very pleased that it was over 80% this year. I think I would like to keep it still at 80% because of the difference in the classes, say some, you know, you can never be...
I'd kind of like to maybe get a little more from Rick on this and say, that's 80, but can we make a stretch and look, say, this is what we want, but put a stretch target?
Well, all class cohorts are different, in my opinion.
Right. I understand that, but we went high. That's a stretch target, but if we look at it overall, it makes sense.
I would not be opposed to having, I don't know about a goal, I wouldn't be opposed to having the high school principal come in and giving us an update on what they're doing to increase that, but I don't know if that should be as part of the goal or not.
I can, well, I can tell you that for, they know right now how close or far they are from the 80% by the student. They do, but what they've developed is a system to know where each of the students in the cohort is on target for graduation. And he's sweating it out between 79 and 80 right now. So whereas last year, he was comfortable saying 80, he exceeded 80, got to 84%, and that was great. So a stretch goal is good, but I, if you'd like to hear from him earlier about the graduation initiatives, I think a nice goal would be to hear what are all of the graduation initiatives going on at FDR?
Well, as part of looking at this goal, we can't look at it from year to year because this could be six years away that we're planning as a district. So we have to look at not just this year and next year, but we have to start looking, how is this going to change overall?
Yeah.
I think we have to look at it in terms of sixth grade and the middle school because I don't think you can get to where we want to be unless we identify everything in the sixth grade.
Yeah. I agree. I think that should be a long-term stretch goal.
How difficult would it be to get the kind of tracking information that Rick uses at the high school implemented at the middle school so that we can get the projection back to six years?
I mean, some of that stuff might be already being done, it's just not being passed on.
Eric, come on up to the podium, but...
I wasn't putting you on the spot, Eric.
That's okay.
Part of, part of the, the only caveat there is the cohort count starts when the students enter ninth grade. And any students who move in and out of the district in eighth grade, they don't start to count as the cohort until the minute they hit ninth grade.
Also, I'll say that some of the most challenging situations to get students to graduate are students who enter into the high school after ninth grade, way short of graduation. And we never know about that, you know, from the beginning of that cohort. So that is that we haven't had a chance to work with.
But as a district, we need to push it down. And I think eventually, we got to push it into the elementary school. If we wanted to really have a graduation rate of 90%, let's say, pick a number, we're not going to get there unless we start really early.
Yeah, I would say that those things are happening, K-8, they're just not called graduate more students, so I'll let you speak to that.
Sure, there are areas where Havilland Middle School, our staff, our faculty work hard at supporting this because the first entry point to graduation is the half-credit you get for the laws program in seventh grade. That's the first chance students get to experience what it means to gather 22 credits for graduation. I've been working my first, my five years, my fifth year there with them. They've been doing a great job. We've been looking at their expectations and the rigor of the program. It is a high school-level course offered at the middle level. It's not too unique, lots of districts do it that way. And we're excited to see growth, but I always go back and look at the students who maybe weren't successful and see, well, where was that half a credit? Where was that credit? Our laws at the middle school is another area where, I mean, our LOPE program, our language is another area where students can get a full credit for, towards graduation. And we've been doing a pretty darn good job and high school knows that because they're very limited Spanish one or French one courses happening at the high school level. I would say in the upper of 90%, 90, over 95% most likely are the ones, with the data in front of me, are getting those credits. And then the other part you could look at is how we treat our accelerated and, well, accelerated programs because you can also gather a half a credit in studio art, you can gather a credit in science and a credit in math. So, I mean, a student could leave Havilland with plenty of credits and well on their path or they can leave with, if they were the general student, with one and a half towards graduation, but you could upwards of four, you could sort of start your path and, I mean, that's, I mean, typical, for my time at the high school, typical ninth grader might finish with five credits after ninth grade. So that's just a good marker of how we might be able to support the process as well.
Eric, and two regions.
Yeah, that's the science and the math.
So you can leave with those many credits and two...
Yeah, and of course, the exams that are attached to them, yes, absolutely.
Well, I don't think we're looking at just the credits you get for high school because we're looking at the English, the math, the science, because those are your stepping stones into high school and where, where are the kids at in that? Can't look at just the credits they're receiving, but we have to look at the program as setting them up for the high school.
Sure. And I just, so I don't know what marker besides credits that the high school uses for graduation rate, so that's why I focus it there. The other data I may not have in front of me now as to what that might look like. An absent of a really consistent crop of students who engage the state assessments when you're upwards of almost, almost 60% refusal rate, it's tough to have hard numbers as to where they are on objective assessments and/or norm reference tests.
The teachers should be able to give us a statement of where they think their child, the children are. Each... the children are, each child is.
Well, we do, at the end of each, at the end of each grade, we do recommendations, which leads to that track of English and, well, English honors and accelerated math and accelerated science. There's not a track for honors or accelerated social studies.
To be clear, what my goal would be in the middle school is to know what kind of programs and what we're doing to make children successful, not what they're learning or what classes they're taking, but how are we providing an environment that, A, makes school fun, I think it should be fun, do they have the skills to do homework, what are their organizational skills, what are their, you know, how do they, how do they approach their homework? Things, things like building blocks, like Jeff was saying, but building blocks in order to be a successful student in high school.
Sure.
And the seventh and eighth, and I think the same applies to elementary school.
I would say we have a really strong informal network to really have kids engage and learn and be a part of a quality liberal arts instructional program that is grounded in wonderful work from the directors around curriculum and instruction, but the work that teachers do around the readiness skills is centered on what's the next level, what do they need to know and be able to do to be successful.
I'm sure it happens. I think it needs to be documented so that you get a, you get a sense where you are early enough, so that if you need some kind of interventions, that we can, we can plan ahead for that, so that by the time they get to seventh or eighth grade, we have something maybe in place and something that transitions students from seventh grade, eighth grade, or rather, from eighth grade to the high school, which I know we do some things, you know, and I think we should looking, be looking at things that can improve that process.
I welcome to be part of a larger discussion about that and how we can support those kids.
And not to forget that we have a very sophisticated response to intervention system in place.
Oh, absolutely. We have a wonderful way of identifying, and we have quite a large number of students who already receive those academic intervention supports to build those foundational skills for success.
And also, you know, I think it's appropriate now to include in that discussion the impact of the one-on-one initiative at the middle school, as how it can be extended to for remediation to get students back on track, and what effect is it going to have on moving these kids forward even further.
Absolutely, we're always looking for ways to even extend a school day. You know, we have a wonderful opportunity with new staff in the library to have that open and available for kids from three to four, and then utilize our late bus home for those who may not have internet service or connectivity at home, that they can continue their academics after school. That's something new with our new librarian staff, and the good use of TAs and teaching assistants to be able to have that happen too. So that's brand new this year, in fact, they're rolling it out to the faculty on Monday at our first faculty meeting, so just another way that we're trying to extend that.
How integrated and how does that information flow up to the high school? I mean, it seems like we got, we're doing something here, and it's really good, and we're doing something here, and it's really good, but how connected are they?
The information sharing between Havilin and the high school.
Right.
We have formal networks through our counseling offices and through the administrative offices, and of course, all the record sharing, but we're always looking for different and inventive ways, mindful that I spent eleven years at the high school and always looking for ways to transition kids up to there. Now I'm on the other end, looking for ways to transition students to there. So I'm always open for that. I know they have had positive partner programs and other programs at the high school to support our at-risk kids. Those are new in the last couple of years since Mr. Partey's been there, and we're always having that conversation about how we're looking to do that. We actually, we just recently had a conversation about our counseling offices and how they play roles in moving kids in that direction as well. So we're always looking to bridge those gaps.
Maybe we could have a report during the year of how the working relationship between the high school and the middle school in this area?
I mean, I...
Well, I think we're discussing the fourth bullet here, and I would like to reserve what we do with that one and have Mr. Partey come to the next board meeting, basically, if that's okay. So I think we need to have a realistical, and I think we're only going to know that if we talk to the people who are actually in the building.
Rick and Eric are just...
Well, if Eric could be here, that would be, that would be great. Okay. So then if we move on to board, actual board operation, administrative office, I don't think we need to do another retreat, although the retreat was, in its own way, I thought, successful.
I think we've been having retreats for several years in a row, and I think that as an ongoing education device for the board, it's a good thing to maintain, even though we may not know exactly what the topic's going to be.
Well, that's true, that is true. There's other things other than what we looked at this past year.
Right.
The cost is minimal, so it's not, it's not like it's a big cost.
Yeah.
All right.
Linda and I actually, and she's remembering and I'm not, had said, if the board's going to do a retreat this year, we kind of thought of one topic, and I can't remember, but I think Linda does.
Yeah, I, I talked about maybe just presenting or talking about a long-term financial plan.
Right.
Long-term financial, five-year plan, like?
Mm-hmm, we're not required to have one, but we could have one on file. If the board wants to formally adopt a plan, then it does have to be on our website.
So does NISBA provide a...
Yes, they do on long-term.
A budget for financial planning?
And there's multiple people that do, NISBA's one of them.
My training through my organization...
How about if we have the goal as a board retreat by the end of the academic year to investigate long-term fiscal planning?
And Linda's organization is probably better qualified, they do really good work around that as well, so.
I'm actually doing a training this year, it's a workshop, where by the end of it, we'll, I should have a plan that I could, could share, or a plan that I, that I would recommend that we follow.
So maybe if we have the retreat, we learn about it, and then we see a model at the end of the year, could be a nice...
I...
Are we losing a year in the process by having it at the end of this year? Because it would not be provided in time.
Well, I think last year, we put it by the end of the year because we didn't have longer to take to organize. I think we're going to, if we have this as a goal, we'll initiate immediately as to when and how, you know, when we could have it.
Yeah.
You know, we're not going to wait till the end of the year. The other one was receive an update on the new administrative structure, which I think is working beautifully, but we do have some new administrators this year, and I would kind of like a report on, I don't know if that's a goal, but I certainly would like a report on how well they've been integrated into the district and how that is all working. So maybe that's a report and not a goal, but two new principals, two new assistant principals, I'd kind of like to know, I'd like to know how that works.
Yeah, I mean, we're not allowed to talk about performance, but we could certainly talk about them joining the team, and I can tell you, they've jumped right in, but yeah, we can do that. I don't know how you want to phrase that, though.
Well, I'm not sure that's a goal, but it just, it just occurred to me that that's something that maybe we could schedule.
Restructure of people.
I mean, any other, any other board, really board things? We have rarely gone to conventions, anybody interested in those kinds of things. I know Denise is actually going to go this year.
Is she going to?
Yeah, but in the past, we've never done that as a group. I can't say it's good or bad, because I've never been to it, I know it costs money, and I don't like spending money, so. Any other thoughts on any other board goals, strictly for us?
Well, I thought at different times, I mean, as a new board member, we're required to go to training events within the first year, I think is what the requirement is. And I've often wondered if we wouldn't benefit, I mean, speaking for myself anyway...
Well, there's certainly a lot of courses that...
Of going back to that same training, you know, it's, they offered as if it's just for new board members, but it's not, it's for any board member to attend. And after you've been on the board for a few years, that training may actually be more valuable, because you know better of what they're talking about.
Yeah, I agree with you that.
So, you know, I wonder if we should look at the curriculum that's offered and, you know, whether we all go or some go. I think, so maybe the goal is to look at professional development opportunities...
Yeah, okay.
For...
I like that.
For board members.
Okay. Good. So, moving on to budget.
Well, how does that boil down to a goal? It's a good idea, but I didn't hear...
Identify and identify, coordinate, and attend professional development training for board members.
Why don't we make the goal, we will avail ourselves of at least one professional development opportunity. That's a goal. Doesn't say which one, but it...
Each board member.
One for the school year.
Or whether we do it individually.
Well, they have all kinds of online stuff, we could do as a group, or we can do individually.
Said you could have a book study, there's some good books out there. But while we're on the topic, there are, we'll continue to send to you, but there are some regional evening workshops that are open to administrators and board members. The Mid Hudson School Study Council offers a couple throughout the year, and the legal ones are fascinating, there's, they have a number of them, so maybe we'll just, you know, not part of the best, part of the way to support the goal, really kind of highlight those and get them to you.
Perry, I think you're on to something, because what do we do for staff? We encourage them to have professional development. That certainly should apply to us as well. So, budget and administration, create a budget, maintain that, I think that's like an over-under, we always do that.
It's not clear that we finished that goal.
What did you end up with there, Steve?
What I wrote down was all board members will attend at least one professional development, preferably as a group.
That's fine. That's good.
Measurable.
By the way, I have a shared document.
Yeah, I saw it, yeah.
So, the only person that's not on it that ought to be is Jay.
You and both.
I know.
Sorry. I saw it, and I knocked it down, so keep going.
Yeah, for the next, next meeting, maybe we'll work from that doc.
Great. Move on to budget. Create a budget to maintain as many programs as possible, I mean, we do that, we, that's our job, so that should be a goal every year. I don't know if I want to change any of the wording. Equity, focus, more closer to actual, well, we actually are doing that now, I don't know if you need to put the focus part, leave it in, but that's fine.
I said we remove more, so that it reads focus closely on actual spending.
Yes, I agree with that.
Okay. Number two is, it was pertaining to last year, it doesn't, is there any other budget or administrative thing?
Unless there's, there was any modification to the structure as a result of it working to it last year, that's going to have budget implications, I don't know that we need one.
Yeah, I, I had in my mind one, but I don't know if it's administration or community. You guys can tell me. I am especially interested in cloning the Havilin Community Night function the way to other schools. I think, you know, I've been to them, and they, they really work. People come and they, and it's a nice format, and there's lots of information, and I think if we could spread that, first up to the high school, I think, I think, I don't think enough gets done up to high school, actually, on this kind of community stuff, but certainly at the elementary schools as well, of which, a number of them have their own community-type nights, and I was just wondering if you could all get together and have a kind of a cohesive format that lends itself, so, oh, I did that in the elementary school, sure, I'm going to go to the one at the middle, at the middle school, because, you know, I know, I know what that is. But that's kind of a goal I would like to see, I don't know where it fits in, but...
Yeah, it's hard to say without you having seen firsthand, let's say, Deanna's Community Night and Ralph R. Smith Student Expo, which has run two years in a row, which are phenomenal. So there's part, and, you know, we have staff members sitting here who, I don't know, my only hesitation is this, so the Student Expo at Ralph R. Smith has happened two years in a row, it's phenomenal, the attendance is unbelievable, and it was developed by their building leadership team. Eric's Community Night was developed by his building leadership team. Was yours designed by your building leadership team? So I'm wondering if we should say that we would like each school to have a Community Night, but I hesitate to say, why have a building leadership team if they can't design what's working for them? But maybe what we could do is come up with some common elements.
Yeah, but what's working for Violet Avenue might also work at Ralph Smith, and what's working at Ralph Smith might work at the middle school.
Right, but I wouldn't want to, I wouldn't want to say you have, mandate you have to clone, but maybe we can come up with some common elements, but, you know...
Is it something as simple as creating a vehicle where they can share best practices?
Yeah.
What worked particularly well, what didn't, share it, and the other team takes it for what it's worth, and sees if there's an application to improve what they're doing.
Okay. Does that come out as a goal, or is that just a direction to the...
Your goals are my goals.
The goal that I, I got out of that was conduct a Community Night at all schools.
And share best practices? I mean, well, whatever, we can, we could, we would do that, yeah.
Are you willing to put a goal that board members will attend at least one Community Night?
Yeah, I, you know, if the board's going to make it their goal, you know, you got, you have to at least, how are you going to measure it if you don't attend and don't see them? Because, you know, one of the things that's really just so incredible in the district that's growing exponentially is the schools that are having events in the evening, and the staff is volunteering, like, three-quarters or more of the staff is volunteering to come out, so I would really encourage board members, if you're going to put, if this is your goal, I agree with Jeff, then support the goal. I'm not sure anybody made it to Ralph R. or Deanna's.
In the past, in the past, I've had board goals that, that we should...
A way to attend events.
Attend things, and that's a little tough, that's easy for me to say, because I don't have requirements that, that might prevent me from doing that, and many of these events are in the afternoon, which is even harder for people that are working. So I hesitate to put it as a, as a goal, I certainly would encourage, I would encourage people, when they have the time, to go to these, I've been to Eric's, I did miss, I was, I had another activity for that night for Violet Avenue, but, yeah, if we don't, if we don't go and see what they're, that's, the reason I'm bringing this up is because I've been to that one, and I know what it, and I, I got stuff out of it.
But having been to Deanna's and Melissa's and North Park, and FTR has something different, you know, I don't know, it's...
Well, I'm just saying, you know, if, anything that can encourage the community to get involved and to know what goes on in the school is a good thing.
Right, and so I think the way you have it written is good, we can report on the Community Nights, and we can encourage... community nights, and we can encourage board members to attend. The schools that have been doing them, the turnout by the community is astronomical. It's grown exponentially.
I still think we need, I still think we need to have a goal that a board member will attend at least one community night. If we're gonna put it in there, then we have to say we're going to attend at least one.
I'm gonna take exception to that. I have meetings of one sort or another, many nights a week.
It's hard, Jeff.
I won't, you can make it. I will just tell you that if you're made up.
Well, last year, I was scared. I had to work on three of the community nights, so the big ones that I wanted to go.
Maybe we make the goal that some member of the board cover each of the community nights.
Well, that, we could do it that way.
And then we can share the information that they gathered.
That's, I like that.
To those who could not make it. So, we'll fill in by putting Doug's name next to all of them. Since he says he can do it.
I can. I can. And, which brought me to one other, I don't, I'm trying to remember if I always got a heads-up about a particular evening. I need to get an email, so, and a, you know, a schedule that I can put on my phone, because if it's on my phone, every morning when I get up, I look at my calendar for the day, and if I, you know, that would be very helpful for me, because I haven't missed things that I would've gone to that I just was, probably should've been aware of, but wasn't. So, if that, if that kind of thing, that when you come up with these things, if you could just send a calendar update to the board members, that would be very helpful.
Oh, that'll be great.
The goal that I have currently written is conduct a community night at each school. Personal schedules permitting, each board member will attend at least one.
I thought we changed that to at least one board member would attend each one.
I know. I rewrote it to suit my opinion.
I've got the keyboard.
Hey, who's got the keyboard?
If, if there's a majority that disagree with that, I'll change it.
I'm fine with that. Like I said, I have enjoyed the ones I've gone to. I'd be more than happy to go to them all. I do have plenty of free time, so.
Is it homecoming cameras?
But, you know, I mean, if you want to get into it, I'd love to see more participation in other events. I don't go to as many sporting events as I would like to, and I know Dan does. The concerts and stuff, I go to. And I think the community realizes when you're there. They know, even if you're not announced as being there, they, once they get to know you, they know, Mr. Eater's here, or Mr. Mendermeyer's here. So, I would encourage participation in all things, not just community nights, but, you know, I'm happy with community nights. We'll get started, small, baby steps. That'd be good.
I'm not interested in debating that topic.
Yeah, I know.
However, I don't think that the majority of the community recognizes the school board members. I really don't. And furthermore, I don't think that they know or many, I'm venturing, and this is my opinion.
Okay.
I don't have any statistic to back it up, but I don't think that it matters to them whether we are at any given function.
I will disagree because I've had community members come up to me and say that, thank you for being here. It really matters that a board member took the time to come to this concert, this, whatever it was, that they do, they, they know. How many people have you seen come up and say, oh, I saw you on TV the other night? You know, they look at the board meeting. They know who we are, and they know if we're there or not.
So, to help settle this, anybody that watches this right now, please feel contact, feel you contact me. My email address is on the website. My home phone is 2291-888. Please let me know. Thank you.
Okay. So, those are the three.
Maybe they just want to see Doug.
All right. So, those are the three things that I wanted to get done tonight. I would like to move on at this time and finish up at the next meeting. All right?
To end on a positive note, I just want to reiterate that the system that the board has established for goal-setting works for the administration as well. It helps guide our work, and I think you've been very successful at setting goals and meeting goals, so I think that is a positive. As much fun as we have setting them.
This was one of the better sessions.
All right. That brings us to the consent agenda. May I have a motion for the consent agenda, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion there? Anything?
I will just add one thing. I mean, since we always approve the treasurer's report.
Yep.
I will tell you that one of the evenings of the Dutchess County School Board Association is we are going to do a training on reading financial statements and reports.
It can be mystifying. You're right.
Yeah.
That could be one of your PDs.
Yep. So, I think we've got someone from ASBO coming to do that, one of the business officials, I can't remember who it was, but.
It is, it is, for anybody who's never looked at one of our budgets, the treasurer's report, it's, if you don't know all the codes, A, and the categories, it's hard to follow what's, not to say that you can't follow it, and that, you know, anybody's hiding anything, but it's, it's, if you're not, if you're not familiar with them, they're tough to read. All right. All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. That should bring us down to, I have a motion for special education placements, please.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Dan?
I recommend the adoption of the package as presented to us.
Thank you. All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Motion for 11-2, Special Education District Plan, 2017-18.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions on that? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Motion for 11.3, waiver of tenure. Should we explain this?
Yeah, I can explain that it is impossible to find a high school technology teacher. We have a gentleman who is a retired technology teacher, so in order to hire him for one year, we have to submit a waiver, and part of that is he's not going for tenure again. He's also a retired administrator.
So, just, I think, because since it's odd, I thought, and explanation there. All right. All in favor?
I think we had a motion.
Oh, we have a motion? I'm sorry.
We had discussion before.
May I have a motion, please? Thank you.
So moved.
Second.
Now, you got any discussion? All in favor? You wouldn't be happy enough if I did something like this.
I was letting you go.
You know. May I have a motion for 11.4, lead evaluation recertification?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. And here we have. Have a motion for the East Coast Assistance Dogs Incorporated Agreement, please.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that one? I think we all know. All in favor? You know, it's, the thing about that, this thing, is you get all geared up, and, but you know it's gonna take two years. And then, you know, it's like, it's like, oh, yeah, wow. I gotta be, I'm gonna be old by the time this thing gets kicked off, you know.
If we adjust the...
I think, I think it's a good thing. I'm really happy.
We need to adjust the schedule, though. We have to adjust the dog's schedule for Thursday evening, board of ed meetings.
Oh, okay.
I think.
I would be happy in a community night.
Or two.
Needs more naps.
We're talking about support. We ought to get board of education volunteers to nap with the dogs on their naptime, so that they feel comfortable.
Well, and for conflict resolution, resolution at the board meetings, we need to service dog. I think that would be, yeah. Yeah?
Put pressure sleeve on everybody. When it gets over the top, you go pet the dog till you calm down and start over.
Okay. Can I have a motion for 11.6, lease renewals for abilities first?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion on that one? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. I have a motion for athletic, bid awards for athletics, please.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion on that one?
So, this is for wrestling, right?
Yes.
Yes.
And we're gonna be doing that at HPE?
I need to get back to you on that because I know there was some discussion about, since it's modified, having it at Havilland Middle School. Last I heard, it was just a discussion. We will be using HPE Gym, but I just need to find out whether it's wrestling or someone else. The plan was to do wrestling there, but then I heard some conversation that I want to double-check on.
We got a motion.
Either way, you've got to.
We got a motion.
Either way.
No? Okay, I have a motion for that, please?
No, we had a motion.
Do we have a motion?
We're done. I'm to the next one. I'm sorry.
Oh, okay. All right. All in favor? Oh, she's supposed to be helping me here. Okay. That brings us to 11.8, I have a motion for the authorization to sign checks. Do you want to, oh, let me have a motion, please, first.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that? The reason? We want to give the reason, or is it in there?
No.
The reason is, we currently don't have a deputy treasurer. That person resigned, so until we hire somebody, just in case the treasurer's not available, I'll be able to sign the checks.
And then as soon as we...
When we appoint somebody and give them authorization to sign checks, we'll rescind my authorization.
Right. Okay. Just so, just wanted to make everybody clear. All in favor? Opposed? Okay. You can sign checks. You've been signing checks forever. Well, after all this mayhem, maybe we might get a taker here. I have a motion to enter public participation, please.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? More than one. It's okay. We can have more. You can have more than one, but you, would anybody like to address the board? Okay. I have a motion to return to, I mean, to close public participation.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion there? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. I don't know of any other matters deemed necessary. Upcoming events. Let me get over here. Thursday, September 21st, there is no school. Just everyone else. No school Thursday. Wednesday, the 27th, at 7:00, is the Screen Ager's showing and HMS Science Lab Tour.
And DLT.
The next board meeting is the 28th of this month, 7:00, here in the district office.
If I'm not mistaken, I believe we have a special ed committee meeting scheduled for the 24th.
Okay. I don't know of any reason we needed another executive session. I have a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion there? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you.